This conference will now be recorded.
Eight thirty, stand for a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, October first, 2024, with our weekly supervisory meeting at the courthouse. It's available by GoToMeeting also and recorded for future watching. We have an agenda in front of us. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
That motion is our second?
Second.
Second.
All payers say aye. Aye. Motion passed. Approved the minutes of September twenty-fourth meeting. Yes, look at them. Motion to approve the...
Summit.
Motion is our second?
Our second.
Any other discussion?
Rowan, Colonel Jim?
Aye.
Sidney, aye. Mike?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye. County Attorney General Discussion.
I don't have anything for you unless you have questions. I should be here.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Sheriff, he's here. Department of Ed Discussion.
No, it's anything online.
Are you still nothing? All right. County Engineer update.
I guess I better say something since nobody else is talking.
Yeah, yeah, it's something.
Salt shed's completed, so we'll start moving salt over there when we get a chance to. As far as paving goes, I just got a call this morning from a contractor. Heartland is going to be in tomorrow. Start working on line kiln and also the Orchard Road section. They want to do the first lift on those roads tomorrow and then Thursday do the final lifts. And then following that, reduce water and paint. So, pretty quick. Sounds like maybe by the end of the meet, at least the services will be down. And then the crews are out patching. I know there's some concrete patching before winter and that's all we've got for you today.
Orchard Road going to be single lane?
Yeah, they won't do that full lift. I think they'll be single lane. They'll, I think they'll, it's just a short stretch. They'll just run a pilot car, maybe run one lift and then do the other one from the back and keep traffic moving. But line kiln will be a full lift. And they put the flyers out yesterday, they told me.
Very good.
That's good news. I had multiple calls on the Orchard Road, so I'll get back to them tomorrow. It's a day.
Yeah, we had some calls about the milled header part in there and that there wasn't any filling in there. But I know that it was signed, so whatever signs indicate bumps, it might have been a little rough. I don't know if they really could have... There wasn't any asphalt millings to put in to those bumps anyway to make them smoother without hauling them from another site. And if you put rock in there, that just doesn't stay very well. So, being signed and everything else, that looks safer. I don't know if it's even an inch and a half, two inches.
I went over it early, right after it happened, just happened to be there. And that rock and the edging was nice, but within a couple days, I was gone.
And I think they intended to be in here a little bit sooner, but some of the projects held them up. So, but tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Better. Plug up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance for pipeline or phase two in Mitchell County?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
My part of the discussion today will just be to kind of let you know what the other counties are doing around us. I think we now have sixteen that have signed the eminent domain resolution that we did last month, or maybe earlier this month. I can't remember. Last month, I guess. It would have been now, yeah. And so, one of the things I wanted to share was I had been to the Worth County meeting a week ago, which wasn't the informational meeting, but it was just a public meeting they had. We had about fifty people there. And so, their discussion was on getting the next things, like you guys are doing, the survey ordinance and the setback limit ordinance. And the planning and zoning in Worth County met last night. And so, their discussion was all around deciding on the setback limit numbers and passing their ordinances so that they could have their public meeting the end of October. And so, their discussion was the minimum distance. And for each type of pipeline was kind of how they were breaking it down. If it was an LP line or a hazardous CO2 pipeline, they thought they'd have different setback limits. But the one they talked about the most for the CO2 pipeline was having a setback limit to homes at sixteen hundred to eighteen hundred and seventy-five feet. And that they were putting in their ordinance that they'll then have another hearing about. I think they'll discuss it again in one week. And then, but they did go ahead and schedule the public meeting, knowing that would need to be done. And they're trying to get this all done before the end of the year because we don't know when the hearings are going to be for phase two. If the IDP starts those or finishes them quickly, then they want to get it in place before that happens. And so, they were kind of basing it off the Dickinson County ordinances that were put in place. And that was back. They started their process in January of fifteen of 2024. And it was March eighteenth when they finalized their Dickinson County ordinance. And then it went to the Board of Supervisors in May of 2024. So, there was some, you know, they still are just studying things. They haven't worked at it as long as you guys have actually, as far as informational. They just got their notice in February about the pipeline when they added the Poet ethanol plants. So, they've been working on that. And then, one other thing that came up at that meeting was the fact that how many new wells had had to be drilled around the ethanol plant. And so, there... So, one of the constituents there, she said, "In 2012, we discovered our well was pumping air and needed to be replaced. We knew it wasn't something we could put up. All was great until about six or seven years ago, when we started pumping tiny bits of what we were told was shale. And it seemed that it was a coincidence that Poet had drilled another five hundred and twenty-five foot deep well in 2017." So, about at the same timeframe. She doubted that it was a coincidence. "We added filters and continued to hope for the best. In February was when we first heard about Summit's plans to build a carbon capture system at the Hanlon Town ethanol plant. We started talking to neighbors about their need for even more water. It was then we found our two closest neighbors also had to drill new wells, one in 2012, one in 2013. At that point, it got concerning. We started totaling up the number of new wells that had been drilled since Poet put their first well at four hundred and twenty-eight feet in 2004. In the decade prior to Poet drilling their well and producing ethanol, there were an average of twelve new wells drilled in Worth County per year. In the ten years since the ethanol plant came in, the average has increased to twenty-four new wells per year. We have since learned that two other residences close to the plant had to replace their wells about the same time. The city of Hanlon Town has had to drop their well a hundred feet as they were also pumping sand. These drastic increase in failed wells raises serious questions about the sustainability of our groundwater supply and the potential long-term effects." So, that was just some other concerns that came up, kind of a sideline to all of this discussion about the pipeline. And I'm just going to close with a statement from the informational meeting that was held in San Ansgar. "The final speaker at the meeting addressed the IOC and the Office of Consumer Advocate Representatives. This moment is not about us. It's about future generations," he said. "It's about what will happen to our land, to our progeny if something goes wrong. These pipelines will not last forever." He challenged the representatives to say they would support this project one hundred percent for their grandchildren and great-grandchildren. "We need to count on you. We need you to take this message back to the people who aren't here who should be." So, that was just something to think about long-term. Maybe nothing will happen in the first couple of years, but we want to think long-term. Thank you. And I think, are there any comments from Lisa Resort? She can't be here. Okay, so Penny, take Lucy's place.
My name is Penny Morrison. I'm speaking on behalf of Lisa Resort, who had a... She couldn't be here today. "We know the risk of getting sued for passing an ordinance is a concern, and we thank you for being fiscally responsible. I'm going to share what we've learned from other counties and how we are in a better place now because we know more about hazardous pipeline ordinances and because several counties have been navigating this process for three years now. In order to act for the well-being of the entire county, we want you to know that the people of Mitchell County want you, as a board, to use your power to pass a hazardous pipeline ordinance. If the county is sued for doing so, we believe it is a good use of our money. We support an ordinance and are willing to do what it takes to get this local policy passed and enforced. The risks of a CO2 pipeline rupture are far worse than the potential costs of a lawsuit. The price of our homes, our health, and our environment mean much more than the fear of paying for a lawsuit. And if or when a rupture occurs, the county may be sued by impacted landowners for not taking the necessary steps to do what you can while you can to protect the well-being of the county. Would you rather risk the costs of doing the right thing or the risk of our well-being and the costs after the fact? We've heard Summit say to other counties that an ordinance will be a cost to taxpayers, but that is really hard to stomach when they're using our tax dollars to build this pipeline that we don't want or need. We think this: Passing a planning and zoning ordinance is a good use of our money. The risk of the pipeline overall definitely outweighs the risk of a lawsuit from Summit. Plus, Summit does not have to sue the counties. They can choose not to. Coming into our community and threatening litigation for upholding your responsibility to protect the well-being of the county and its residents is not a good look. It's not a good way to build a relationship with the community if you want to be in it for the long term. It's a choice, and Summit will be the ones responsible for making it. You are the ones responsible for making the choice to stand up for your constituents by exercising what local control you have left to do the right thing and pass an ordinance. Many counties have passed ordinances around the state. Like Dev just mentioned, our neighbors in Worth County are working on one now. Almost three years ago, Shelby County was sued by Summit for being one of the first counties to pass a planning and zoning ordinance for hazardous pipelines. Since then, Shelby County has not paid a dime. Their insurance covers the bill, and no financial responsibility has fallen on their taxpayers. We are asking you to put your fear aside and do it as right. Pass a planning and zoning ordinance in Mitchell County so that we don't end up paying the cost with our lives or our water in the long run. We want you to do what Worth County is doing. They made the necessary, simple, they made the process simple by using Dickinson's County's ordinance as a model, tweaking the details to fit the needs of their county. They chose to pass an ordinance to prioritize their constituents. We want you to do the same. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Margaret Meyer, Mitchell County resident. And I get the fun part is to thank you. You guys have listened to us. You have attended meetings. You have conducted your own research into our concerns. And they are the same concerns, as you know, that many, many counties across Iowa and the constituents of those counties feel. So, I'm here to thank you for your time, for your listening skills, and for your discernment. And also to ask you formally if you will pass a zoning ordinance. So, will you pass a zoning ordinance to protect the citizens of Mitchell County?
I definitely will look at it. Absolutely.
Will you?
Yeah. We looked at the one from Bray County and Bremer County, and I guess I haven't got it written up yet to present the rest of the board at it, but next week.
Will you pass an ordinance to protect?
Yeah, definitely. Yes.
Thank you. Will you pass an ordinance to protect? And will you pass an ordinance to protect?
Probably not. Federal judges said that we can't do that. I have a document right here, the article. Why would I, why would I knowingly put a county in a litigation lawsuit? You know?
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have something? Comments? All right, we'll move on to number eight then. Discussion possible action on the ARP PA request? I want to talk on that.
I sure can. So, I emailed you guys' application. I didn't know if you wanted to go to that or if you guys had any questions. So, it's for new equipment for the nurses. I have applied for another grant, but the max is $2,000. And I need about $4,200 to cover all of the expenses. So, if I do not get that other grant, it would be dropped down to about $2,200 instead of $4,200.
Do you know when you're going to hear from that guy?
Should be by, by the end of this month.
So, if we okay this, and then you get the grant, then...
So, then I would not, it would only be about $2,200 that I would be submitted receipts for that. And I'm not, I'm waiting to purchase anything until that other grant comes through.
So, we would vote for up to...
Up to this amount.
Instead, if she gives the one grant.
Because I grant this specifically for this stuff, so, yeah, I would use those funds for this.
And reimburse ARP money there?
Yeah, I don't know how. I suppose we'll wait until I purchase it. And then, I don't know if I have it reimbursed halfway through that. And then, or how, you'd want to reimburse us, or you pay half the bill, or, I mean... Pay the bill at that time with those funds, and then we will pay the other amount. So, because when I get the other grant, they just send a check when it's approved.
Yeah.
And then I'll have that. So, yeah, it would be up to $4,200.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the $4,200 if needed, or the $2,200 if needed, when the time comes.
Yeah, motion is our second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Rowan, Colonel Jim?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye. I can order my guests.
Thank you very much.
Approved liquor license for Island Creek Apple Farm LLC. Liquor license for the apple orchard. They have all their insurance. Big board.
I'll move to make that motion.
That motion is our second. Any other discussion?
Rowan, Colonel Sidney?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Aye. Jim?
Aye.
All right. Discussion of possible action on sidewalk leveling. Dave here or not?
He's got another quote coming in. We'll just wait and see, see what that one is. We'll start making decisions on that.
Because Brown Scouts sent, they have a quote, did they?
They felt that their service is a little bigger than what needs to be done with this, and they're afraid they actually might raise things more than what needs to be done. So, they're honest. They said it's, they think they do more than what the scope of this is.
Okay, we'll wait for that. Water Works, wasn't that supposed to do it?
American Water Works.
American Water Works. All right. Discussion, discussion on counting on property in New Haven?
So, I know there's been some discussion, or people wanting to purchase this. So, I don't know how the legal way is to do this. You put it for, to get it appraised and put it for sealed bids, or do you, I don't know.
You don't have to do bids.
You don't have to.
You can. You don't have to. Years ago, the statute was written that, that it was done in a public bidding. That statute was rewritten some time ago. That's certainly one way, though, it hasn't been go about in counties on the town. But it's also true that the county can... You can consider what, when I say you, I mean you are the one. I mean, you can consider what you think is, for lack of a better word, the best use of the property, right? In other words, you do not have to give, if somebody walks in, like to this meeting now, and said, "I'll pay you a million dollars for that," you wouldn't have to sell it. I mean, maybe you'd be a fool on two. I don't know. That's a different question. You wouldn't have to do that. What you do have to do is however you proceed, you have to set up for hearing. Has to be noticed, published. You have to have a hearing. So, if somebody, if somebody makes an offer, for example, and if, if the county decided, "We would like to accept that," then you would, you couldn't, you know, you couldn't accept it at that time. You'd have to, well, you'd have to meet, go through the procedure. Then you have to publish notice. You have to set a hearing. Then you have a hearing. People have a right to state their position, whatever. That's getting a little bit down the road. I think the question you're answering, the question you're asking is, how are we supposed to go about starting? So, you don't have to put it out for bids. You don't, you don't really want to gift it unless it's for a public purpose. And public purpose, you know, you could, you know, you could say, for example, "Well, if we gifted it to this entity, then that would be a public purpose. It's for the good of the community." I'm not sure that's really what that means. I think that mean, more means that it has to be for kind of a county legal kind of a benefit. In other words, you know, there might be reasons the county would gift it to somebody to, I don't know, establish an HTR center. I don't know. It's off the top of my head. You know, that might be a... Anyway, you want to be careful about just gifting. So, well, one thing you could do, and I don't know if this is necessarily what you ought to do, you could do this. You could get it appraised, as you mentioned. I don't know that you have to go that far. I mean, you could. It's going to cost a little money, probably not that much because it's...
Bare ground.
You know, yeah, it's not that big. You could have a realtor maybe go out there and say, "What is this bare lot worth?"
That's what I was thinking for, as far as appraisal.
Yeah, and that would be something you could do. You don't have to go to that length, but you certainly can. If there's an interested entity, person, party out there, they can approach, you know, they can approach you guys, you know, and make an offer. Then you guys can take it from there. You don't have to, you don't have to sell it. And I'm just laying out options here. I'm not telling you what to do. You don't have to sell it. For example, the county could keep, the county could keep it. And if they said, "Well, we want to lease it to somebody," you could do that too. You have to follow anything that's more than, what is it? I think three years. You have to follow those same procedures and give them notice and things like that. Having a hearing. Somebody says, "Why would we consider doing that?" I'm not saying you should. I'm just saying that's, it's an option, you know, if you thought, "Well, maybe we want to keep some control over it." Another thing, you know, you could do is give, give an easement over it to somebody if they wanted to have some use for our property, but you wanted to maintain control over someone, what happened to it. Somebody could have, like, an easement across it. You'd probably still follow those same procedures. But, but given, the reason I bring that up is I know there is some concern. I mean, I don't know how much. I've had it expressed to me. I don't know how widespread it is. A little bit of concern that that property could somehow end up back kind of in the same situation where we end up the same mess again. And when I'm kind of looking at this, I'm kind of thinking of that. I mean, it's not my, I mean, you can do whatever you want, but I'm kind of thinking, "Well, I don't know how realistic that is, but you know, could be." So, what I'm saying is, is you can dispose of it outright. You don't have to dispose of it outright. You don't have to do a public bid. It's not a bad idea to get a realtor maybe to say, "What's this thing worth?" You're not glued to it, right? Because there's other considerations than just money, right? I mean, somebody might say, "It's worth this much." And that mean, you have to sell it because there are other considerations in money. Somebody might come in and say, "I'm going to put a mine in there." You'd say, "Well, no, we don't want that. We're not going to sell it to you," right? So, you do have some discretion. I think as a board, you have to maybe decide how you want to proceed. Because otherwise, I'm just throwing options out there, all of which are viable, but don't really point you in any direction. And I realize that.
Well, I just know that the church would like half, and the neighbor there would like half to...
Well, I feel like we should just...
Somebody else that was interested for, maybe build a house there, probably. So, I, you know, it's...
I feel like we should just sell it to the cemetery, and then the cemeteries, they can split it up on their own. That way, we don't have to have this splitting it up and worrying about this. We just say, "Okay, we're going to go through this process, and we're going to give it to the cemetery, and then this amount, this amount of money," instead of...
I don't want to split that either.
Yeah, it's just going to be too much.
Cemetery, Cemetery Association sent an email. Their phone numbers are on that. They expressed interest that they would like to purchase it. I went to see it. The assessor, the assessor said, apparently has $4,200 on it, this part of the ground. She said that that's, I asked her if it's going to be any different when things are tore down. And basically, no, it's, that's roughly what you guys on it.
So...
Why can't we put it out for bid and talk, bid against it? They can do what they want.
Well, as I said, we can do whatever we want.
I have, I have a thought on that. I've thought about that myself. So, a few years ago, the house west of this property, not the old bar, but the house west, their sewer went bad. And remember, they, they came and wanted the county to help? They were just asking. And we weren't in that business. We said, "No." So, I watched, they, their sewer septic went across the highway. And then, I do know the building, whether it was the old bar, that actually is up for sale. That is grandfathered in the septic and sewer. But I believe that whoever buys that has to update all that. And the lady to the west, just west of it, I was out there while back. Her whole backyard is sewer and septic. And this property is about that same size. Well, I don't know if you're going to be able to get a septic and sewer system on that property. For one, you can't go across the highway because there's a residence there. So, I'm actually, I favor offering the cemetery or the gal next, because she would like to put up an addition and possibly a garage. And there's some... And there's some property tax coming back for us if she would do that. But I'm just afraid that it's just not enough property to build a house and put a septic and leach filter there. That's just my two cents.
Didn't Mr. Horgan say somebody wanted to build a, put up a shed there?
Yeah.
So they want me to sew it in?
Would they? I don't want to see a bathroom in there. Yeah. There's been multiple inquiries into it, I do know.
So if we put it up for bid and test the water and see if it, what it's, what it's to pay for?
I want, I want the cemetery to know. So by law. I feel they have a, a good need for it in regards to them, the parking
Yeah.
serves for, serves a lot of people that have come to visit their mom and dad, their grandma, grandpa, and whatever. Just an improvement for the community.
When there's a funeral, there's a lot of vehicles in the right of way. And then on that curb as well, because it's so big, there's no parking. You come around the curves and meet a semi. There's no one.
I don't know what they're willing to offer, that was not on this. So I mean, I have no idea about that, but I'd like to consider now.
So where are next of agenda for action now?
Yeah, they can let us know what they, yeah.
We don't have no action today, so we can't, no idea. See what happens during the week, if somebody approaches, somebody. Anybody else have any ideas?
So if we just say, "Yeah, we're going to give it to the cemetery." Do we have to go through the public notice and all that?
I don't like the idea of gift.
No, 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 not give, not give it, like, they purchase it.
So I, what somebody needs to do, I mean, you know, again, I always say this, you have you have to be very careful, you, you can't have three of you go somewhere and say, "Hey, you guys interested in this? You can't, can't do any of that, it has to be done at a meeting." And for good reason. But if somebody wanted to, like I said, it would probably be worth it to find out one way or the other, kind of what the value of that place is. Sounds like you're already kind of on top of that. And doesn't necessarily have to be sold for that, but it's, it's a good baseline. But anyway, cemetery's interested, they're listening, tell somebody, you know, "Hey, we want to buy for this." "One of you guys want to approach them?" "All right." Can't start talking amongst yourselves about what you're going to do, but you could report back maybe that somebody needs to approach somebody.
Sydney, it's your district, you want to contact the Cemetery Association?
Yeah, I've been in contact with them.
See what they want to offer for it.
Mr. Horgan, you have something?
Think that our county assessor in your planning and zoning department will be able to give you all the answers you're seeking there as to the value and what could be put upon that. Maybe you should check and see what your funding and zoning recommends on those. What is it, zone residential, how is it going? You have the power of finding that out through your own aptitudes.
So the assessor does have forty-three hundred on it, that was, so.
All righty, so Sydney, I'll contact them people and see what happens next week.
When you do, I would, I would recommend that if the cemetery wants to purchase it, I would like the neighbor to have
They already know that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. They've already been in contact with Jessica and they've said, "If we purchase this, we'll figure out this."
Okay.
Yeah.
You?
It's going to go to, if it goes that way, we'd go with American.
Good. Discussion about school action on HVAC favor request application twenty-five.
So the HVAC project is closing out. Actually, yesterday was a closeout day, a day had to be decided because of paperwork that needs to be done. Part of the closeout process, and I emailed this to you people, but just the payoff did not come in very clear, so Todd printed it for us also. I also emailed you the portion of the A101, which is the contract that you signed in regards to the project. And in there it states as far as how, what substantial, not a substantial, that closeout of the project, the beta retainage, what's remaining. That dollar amount is eighty-four thousand ninety point seven three dollars. And I can explain more of the project, I guess we can just do the app here first and then I can explain some more of the project if you'd like.
Ain't there still some issues, underlying issues?
The, so, okay, so the DOES, that's what I was going to talk about. There's a DOES unit that's in there, that's what it's called. Purpose of the DOES unit, yeah, okay, I'll back up you a little bit more. When we started the project, this was paid for by ARPA dollars. And the idea with ARPA at that time was to use the money to improve the health of different areas. And for that building, I'll call it conditioned air in regards to fresh air, filtered air. That was the whole process of the ARPA dollars. So the purpose of the DOES unit is to bring in, and it's all controlled through controls. The DOES unit will control the, the air of particular rooms in regards to, if the air is too humid, it will dehumidify the air. If the air needs to be cooled, it has to denser, then it will do that. It just, it's just kind of a brain in regards to what each individual room needs. It can, can close off outside air, it can increase outside air. It, it analyzes the outside air temperature and humidity, lots of stuff. So when it was delivered, it was pretty much delivered as factory specs, which was more than what our building needed. And it was running at a higher level than what our building needed. So it was either the last third year of Friday, they came, spent eight hours as far as all the safety better needs of our building. It was running at twenty amps and now they've got it down to two amps. So it's been decreased by ten times as far as what it was actually doing. It's set so that it doesn't need to constantly bring in fresh air. If you have a super humid day, you really don't need to be bringing in a lot of outside air. Because when you're bringing in that outside humid air, you also have to dehumidify the house, outside air. That's when the boiler kicks in because that's what it's dehumidifying there. So, long story short, it was running on steroids compared to what we needed it to do. And they feel that they've got that situation detuned, so.
If, if we pay this, and it's not, and there still have issues, then what? We don't have recourse, do we?
So there's a, there's a warranty period, there's a multiple warranty period. Manufacturer warranties on all the items. But then there's also a warranty period that was specified in the A101 contract. And there's different, I can pass that around to you. This is one of the copies that I made, sorry. This is going to be part of the final closeout document, but this has some of those are eighteen month and some of those are a twenty-four month warranty that's extended and that's labor and anything that's wrong with the component itself. Manufacturer warranties are over and above that. So this does not supersede any manufacturer warranties. The DOES unit has a twenty-four month warranty, so it's sort of the controls. The controls are, the computer controls the control whole system. There's a twenty-four month warranty on the controls. So if we have problems with the controls or the DOES unit, there are twenty-four months to work, that you can give away that.
And Jim, on that, on those warranties, that don't, has that started yet or is it after we pay?
Today is basically day one because now the signature has not been on the, there's a lot of numbers for documents, there's a seven oh four document, that's the final closeout document. Signature has not been on that because some of this other stuff needed to take place. But warranty basically starts today on stuff. If something breaks today, they fix it. Something breaks six months from now, they fix it. Any, any, can answer any questions or?
I, I mean, if they did, then change it maybe, I know the sheriff wasn't happy with the system, but
No, well, he had a high utility bill. And that's because the DOES unit was running pretty hard.
Pretty hard, yeah.
And that's, that was the component that was made that happen.
The geothermal is supposed to make it more efficient, correct?
Yep. Yep. But that goes back to the very first topic that the money was being able to be used because the idea was to make a better, healthier environment. And that's what that DOES unit does while it was running to harnessing what it needed to do to make a healthy environment, so. So hard to explain, and it's
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
They think they'll give the utility bill down then?
Certainly, so, yeah. If they detuned it by ten times what it was doing, it certainly should make a big difference. I mean, there's no way that I can give you a dollar more or answer you for sure, but I know what they've done to remedy the problem.
Yeah. What? I mean, it's a warranty, I guess, so I guess if we do it, next month, if it's not working out, they'll be back. No charge, so. They're a bigger company, they should be
Pardon me?
I say they're a bigger company, they should be, you know, responsible for their
Oh, they will, they're the ones to take care of the courthouse. I mean, they're, you know, they've fixed this thing when it's not right, so
Yeah.
It's not like they're going to just move off the way.
Right, yeah, I just, yeah, I'm just concerned about the issues.
Yep, legitimately so.
You have a motion for pay request application twenty-five for eighty-four thousand? I'll move to make that motion. Their motion is our second.
Our second is.
Any other discussion?
Roquel, Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sydney, bye. Jim, bye.
Are there any other questions about the HVAC project?
I don't know, meetings attended?
I had nothing.
None.
I had a central Iowa juvenile detention center meeting and pretty much business as usual, things are going good, they're making money. Beds as full as they want, but problem kids get coming in. Glad they have the addition so they can isolate them. We're going to update the employee handbook and review it, it's going to be Tony Reed, the director, and two employees and two of us board members are going to look through it and I don't have it overlooked by a legal counsel to make sure it's good to go and we want you everything's good.
Had a safety meeting with the department, had this, we have need for a year, had our, we have a cycle one for the year. They talked about the panic buttons and Chris Pan, Chris handed out the, yeah, the accident working bill out.
I have fair board. This Ryan Coltry Rabbit Building is dismantled. It was put into a pile, it was burned Sunday. And I went down there yesterday, six-thirty in the morning, and there was three semis there with new building. So things will be happening. That's it.
Clerk of court, we have two thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents. So noted, manure management plan update?
Fluge Farm, thirty-eight ninety Indigo Avenue, Osage. DCI site, thirty-two fifty Kirkwood Avenue, Osage. Barsh Farms, seventy-four ninety-nine Hundred Twenty First Street, Leroy. Randy Ford Finisher Farm, forty-six sixty-five Addison Avenue, Riceville. And Jonas Reed, thirty-seven sixty, Primo's Avenue, Osage.
Public comments, I mean, public.
I didn't get to talk about the survey ordinance, so I just wanted to make comments. There were two ordinances you're considering for the pipeline. And I have read and studied in other, other communities where, when they didn't have a survey ordinance and Summit can come in, especially if they have eminent domain whenever without notifying the landlord, they can, but you could put some, I think you maybe have some samples, just some boundaries around that that notify, notification of the landlord, you know, the time, a timeframe on it, just to, it doesn't stop them from doing anything, but it just kind of makes sure that when they're acting, somebody doesn't come home and find a great big test hole dug in their field that they didn't know about it. You know, that, that the, that the landowners need to be notified and that you put some of those things in place. Doesn't stop them, it's, you know, it seems to me it should be something that the county's not going to get sued for, but it would give the landowners at least, make sure that Summit knows that they have to contact the landlord and the landlord has to write to be there when they're coming to survey. You know, the landlord will not come home and find test, big test holes dug in a field somewhere because, you know, they use eminent domain to do it, maybe they need to contact the landowners. I'm just, I didn't get to talk about that. I just want you to consider that.
Is Kaylee on?
Yeah.
Kaylee, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can.
This is Todd. Penny is wanting us to put ordinance together so you guys would not go to their, the land and property without the owners knowing that. Would that ever happen?
So there are pretty straightforward laws set forth by the state when it comes to survey by Iowa code four seventy-nine B. We do our best to try to reach out to landowners and set a time that works for them so they can be there during survey if they want. You know, if in the event we don't hear back from a landowner, we do have that ten day notification law that, so we'll send out a letter. If we don't hear back from them, then we could go out. We do have that right under Iowa law, but we try to avoid that as much as possible and get to a time that works for the landowner if they wish to be there or at least let them know that when we will be there.
Thank you.
Is that only with eminent domain in place?
Says, it says here that the pipeline committee, "A pipeline company may enter upon private land for the purpose of survey by giving ten days written notice by restrict, by restricted certified mail to the landlord."
After eminent domain?
Doesn't say anything about eminent domain. So they, they notify the landlord, it's in the code.
Yeah, and I can chime in on that if you would like.
I'm in first. One thing I, I would say is I think the sheriff's spoken on this before. I've spoken with sheriff. I'm not going to get into the process of here because we've done it before. I think even we've kind of notified pipeline company before what may be in their best interest to follow. I would probably, if I were them, they can ask their own attorney. They're going to change my mind, I don't think. I, I probably, if I were them, I would avoid showing up and doing something without either the consent or court order. That's, you know, so they can do with that what they want, but That's, you know, so they can do with that what they want, but that's just the right thing to do. I mean, it just is.
Mr. Hanson?
After this meeting that they had in San Antonio, I looked at their map and they indicated that the pipeline was going across my property. And all it was said, the guy said, well, we'll be contacting. Oh, that's fine. We left that week. When we got home, they had been there, but they never called ahead to say they were coming. And they left a nice little note and a pair of gloves. And it was, and was sorry that I wasn't there when they showed up, but they never called ahead to tell me they were coming. So.
Where'd they go? Where, where, where did they, I mean, did they just knock on the door and leave or were they somewhere else?
I have no idea. I wasn't home, but the, the message they left was hanging on my door. So they were up to the house.
You know, and I don't want to get too far. I'm assuming they were not.
They were up to the house. I have no idea where.
On the soup, they didn't just enter your property.
Yeah, right.
If, if, that's, if they did, that'd be a different situation.
Yeah. No, all I'm saying, they were, they were there and up to the house. That's all I know.
All I know is that there are red newspaper articles and other, it might have been in the codes where, you know, where summit showed up and, you know, and the landlord wasn't home and they dug test holes or whatever. I'm just saying. I look at, is any other ordinances that you can do? I know they say they're gonna do, we tried, we're gonna try to do, but I think you need to try to make sure that they do more than try, that they actually, you know, are working with the landowners. That's your job. Their job is to get their pipeline built and pay their shareholders. Your job is to protect the residents of our county. So, I mean, don't confuse their job with your job.
I'll just add into that, however you may believe that summit will try to do the best that they can to contact landowners, they may or may not. This or a survey ordinance helps to put extra protections in for landowners. I pulled up an example of Bremer Counties and I'm just gonna read one small section of it. Surveyors shall receive written permission from landowners stating the exact time and date survey activities will occur and which parcels of land are to be surveyed, including handwritten signatures of approval from the landowners. The sur, the surveyor shall provide the landowners with a copy of the agreement, including signatures of both parties. So it's just a way to ensure that you all are looking out for the landowners of Mitchell County. Your constituents, that you have their back through a stressful process that no one was asking for. It's one way that you can help be there for your constituents.
So what exactly has to happen, I guess, my name's Jamie, you guys are okay? What exactly has to happen in order for you guys to like pass a zoning ordinance? Not unlike Dickinson County that kind of prioritizes the needs of the people. What has to happen in order for that to happen? Is my question?
Well, we have to bring our ordinance to the board and we need three people to pass it.
Okay, so do you have three people that would like to pass some sort of like zoning ordinance on the board right now?
I can only speak with myself, but I have one.
Okay, and then are there two more?
We already spoke through this.
That's totally fine.
And, and I guess we have to be careful because this is public comments and we're, are we in an agenda item? Are we talking about stuff?
I guess I'm just trying to look for a
Yeah, I know, but.
A conversation about it and like wanting to know what actually has to happen in order for that to happen. Because if you have three people right now that would like to do something like that, what has to happen in order for that to initiate?
I need to know that we're not going to get sued, okay? People, people have the, I tried not to, people have the comment that it's for the best interest of the counties, even if we're going to get sued to do this, and we don't have to worry about it because it's taxpayers' money that's not going to be affected. It's our insurance company that's going to pay the money, but who pays the premiums on the insurance company? So I need to know we're not going to get sued. An ordinance adopted by Shelby County that would severely restrict the placement of a proposed carbon dioxide pipeline conflicts with state and federal regulations and should not be enforced, a federal judge ruled this week. This is not just something that's on my mind that I'm just making up. No, no, I'm sorry. I'm talking now. Yeah, well, I am talking. I'm sorry, too. You had something to say? I want to say this. I'm passionate about this, too, and people are advocates. That is very good. There's a purpose for advocates because it gets things done that need to be done. I respect you people for what you're doing. I really do. But I also have a job as a supervisor to watch out for the best interest of the community, too. This is a good interest. I'm not saying that's not, but there's other things that are good interests and one is not to get into a lawsuit when I know it's gonna happen. That's my, that's my opinion on it. And so right now I need to know that we're not going to get sued.
And I'm so sorry, but, so since I know your stance on it and I know your stance on it, I'm just wondering, like, I know that, that you guys are worried about the risk of being here. I understand that's a very real possibility. But should the words happen, do you really want that to be relaxed and met? I think accountability starts with every single individual person and making a choice and standing by that choice is the only important decision. And as people sit in place to protect the county, I mean, that, that is the part of the stuff. So, that's all.
Thank you. Excuse me, I have a comment. My name is Adam Mann. I heard Mr. Reary say that I think the phrase he used was severely restrict.
Well, that's what the judge, that's the judge had down.
I'm not sure an ordinance that was put specific steps that must be taken to get a landowner's okay to do the, permission to do the survey could be considered severely restrictive. It's, it's something that might come into consideration on this whole issue of lawsuits.
There isn't anybody else, public comment, yes?
I just wanted to read from the letter that FinSA sent to Mr. Lee Blank. This was back in September of twenty twenty three. And Lee Blank was with Summit Carbon Solutions CEO. Dear Mr. Blank, the Pipeline and Hazards Material Safety Administration, FinSA, has received several inquiries regarding the ability of federal, state and local governments to affect the siting, design, construction, operation and maintenance of carbon dioxide pipelines. The widespread interest in construction, operation and maintenance of pipelines, I'm sorry, I'm reading this from my screen and it's kind of small. The widespread interest in understanding FinSA's authorities underscores a need to reiterate the message we shared in twenty fourteen with a company proposing a highly visible interstate pipeline. A message directly related to the current pipeline projects proposed by your companies. As was the case in twenty fourteen, FinSA continues to support and encourage all three levels of government, federal, state, local, working collaboratively to ensure the nation's pipeline systems are constructed and operated in a manner that protects public safety and the environment. Congress has vested FinSA with authority to regulate the design, construction, operation and maintenance of pipeline systems, including carbon dioxide pipelines and to protect life, property and the environment from hazards associated with the pipeline operations. While the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission has exclusive authority to regulate the siting of interstate gas transmission pipelines, there is no equivalent federal agency that determines siting of all other pipelines such as carbon dioxide pipeline. Therefore, the responsibility for siting carbon dioxide pipelines rests largely with the individual states and counties through which the pipelines will operate and is governed by state and local law. Then it goes on to say, there's, it's four pages. I'm only going to read a little bit. The role of local governments. Federal preemption of pipeline safety means that states do not have independent authority to regulate pipeline safety that derives the authority from federal law through a certification to FinSA. In the case of local governments that are not subject to federal certification of pipeline safety authority, they may still exercise other powers granted to them under state law, but none that, or none that adopt or enforce pipeline safety standards or contradict federal law. However, FinSA cannot prescribe the location or routing of a pipeline and cannot prohibit construction of a non-pipeline building in proximity to a pipeline. Local governments have traditionally exercised broad powers to regulate land use, including setback distances and property development that includes development in the vicinity of a pipeline. Nothing in the federal pipeline safety law impinges on these traditional prerogatives of local or state government, so long as officials do not attempt to regulate the field of pipeline safety preempted by federal law. And then I'm just going to, the last thing it says is about local government, that they should taking measures such as participating in federal environmental studies conducted under the National Environmental Policy Act and similar state laws for new pipeline construction projects. One thing I've been concerned about is that they are not doing environmental impact studies. And we know we have some very sensitive areas like the conservation ground that they wanted to survey through. And so it seems like we can require environmental impact studies also be done. So anyway, that does say that local governments do have the power when it comes to the siting. I can send that letter on if you don't have it.
I talked to the Wright County engineer about their survey ordinance and they had the Summit Pipeline representative in the, in his office and they have a problem with the ordinance that Wright County.
But we're talking two different things, right? The survey ordinance and the setback or the zoning ordinance.
I was talking about.
So it's two different things.
Right, I was talking about the survey ordinance. So Summit didn't have a problem with that, so I don't know why they would about getting sued if they passed that ordinance. Anybody else?
Yeah, I got something to talk about.
Oh, there.
I got one more item here. I think that we've lost sight up here and we let the state and federal government take over. I think it's time that we bring it back down here to this level. It's got to start here at the grassroots. They lorded it over us for how many years now? We gotta buck up. Yes, there's a possibility of suing, but we gotta start somewhere. And we gotta do it here at the local level and hopefully we can work it out.
And we have hired our own lawyers because of this issue, so.
I'll say this is definitely, there, as far as I know, there is no ruling, legal resolution to this issue, right? I mean, it's, you have various court decisions, sure, but those court decisions are only binding in the jurisdictions that they're in. And I, you know, I gotta tell, I mean, I can't predict how far this thing will go. And when it comes to these kinds of issues, the established law is really, hell, I could give you a clinic on it if you wanted, but none of it really matters. But, you know, I don't know. I'm not so sure. I mean, I can't speak in front of your judge, but I don't know if this were to end up, for example, in front of the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals of the US Supreme Court. I don't know if pipeline companies should necessarily feel that confident. I mean, I, 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 I don't. I might be wrong, you know? I mean, I don't know if people read as much as I do, but.
Well, that's kind of what happened itself before.
So, I mean, this is not a settled issue. People that are advocating, citizens, I mean, that's how things get done.
And summit said there's five thousand miles of carbon capture pipeline that have been built. But that there's millions of miles of, of the LP pipelines and to compare the two is not the same. And, and FinSA has not written the regulations yet for carbon, for the carbon pipeline. So if they get this through before the, those regulations are written, they don't have to meet them. I think they still do. Well, I mean, they've already built it. Are they gonna dig it up and, oh, we gotta re-lube those wells or whatever? It's not that true.
I know that the state of Illinois put a moratorium on any pipeline being, being built until any, any CO2 pipeline being built until those new, those rules are, rules are, are written and presented and adopted.
Anybody else? Yes, Tiger.
I'm thinking of Larry here, and that pipeline's gonna be right close to your place. And I think an ordinance, I think it's everyone's responsibility in here, even if it only, the ordinance covers one person. That's what it's for. Ordinance for the county. But the setback is a real concern. I wouldn't want one, which I'm not sure. I didn't see where it goes by our place. If it's five hundred feet from my place, would I feel comfortable with that? And it's, even if that stopped it from getting closer, like Larry's, it's gonna be real close. I mean, close, close.
So they changed the math again then?
And so it's a responsibility of this whole group, and I'm not picking on any one of you, but it's the same thing that somebody would say, if it helps, if it helps one, it's gonna do it. And it, it needs an ordinance for a distance also. And that's not a big lawsuit. It's just putting some regulations in. They got speed limits on the highway. Is that suggested? You know, you think about it, you gotta keep away from. Everyone has to follow the rules, but if it helps one person in this whole rule, rule, that's what you gotta do. Just my point.
Any other comments? More, whatever? My chance for adjourned at nine thirty seven. Thank you.